I call the meeting to order, City of University Heights City Council Meeting. Today is June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Happy Flag Day, everyone. The meeting is being conducted electronically and thanks, everyone, for attending. We have all five council present. First order of business, approval of minutes, May tenth and May twenty-fourth. Are there any additions or corrections to either minutes? Hearing hearing none, the minutes are approved for May tenth and minutes approved for May twenty-fourth. Comments from the public? I see there's one member of the public here tonight. Warren, would you like to speak or are you just here to listen?
Well, here to listen and I guess speak depending on what I hear with the analysis.
Okay. We'll let you speak during that and so we'll go to, are there any other members of the public that want to speak tonight?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to the first order of business, which is Cozer Highland Intersection Analysis. And Troy and I, well, it was led by Troy. Troy and I met with Kent Rolston, the Executive Director of the MPO of Johnson County, and asked him to do traffic analysis of the Highland intersection. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, Troy?
Sure. I'd been approached by, or Warren was one of the residents, but by a couple residents on Cozer and the section of Cozer between George and Melrose about speeds on that section. I was aware of a traffic study that had previously done by the MPO. And it was suggested that perhaps a stop sign mid-block would accomplish what the residents were open to accomplish. So I had a discussion with the mayor about that particular option. And she was able to give me more information about past traffic study and how the numbers did not justify any calming measures, but allowed me to make further contact. I contacted Kent Rolston with the organization. I had conversations with him and they said they were more than willing to do a traffic study. It was delayed until the spring so that to try to minimize the, I guess, impact of winter weather on causing diminished traffic counts. And then also wanted to make sure we scheduled it at a time or that it was it was done at a time that school was still in session so that it would capture as accurately as possible university traffic. The traffic and Kent can take it from here, but they did do the study earlier this year. School was in session. It was not during a break. It was during the last semester of school. And Kent can speak to the results of those.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Kent Rolston, as the mayor said, I am the Executive Director of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. As was discussed, last fall, I think it was the police chief, as well as the mayor, asked our organization to essentially update a study that was done back in two thousand and eighteen, which we did. The memo that is in your packet documents the findings of the always-stop analysis at Cozer, excuse me, and Highland Drive intersection. You know, I don't intend to go into any great deal on detail on this, but I'll just sort of hit on a few highlights. Then I'm, of course, happy to answer your questions you might have. As the police chief mentioned, we did collect data back in April. It was April nineteenth through twenty-second, or excuse me, nineteen through twenty-second, yeah. We always collect data for seventy-two hours and that is something that's prescribed by national standards. And that's Tuesday through Thursday, essentially, which are typical travel days. Just a few things you'll find in that memo, if you haven't had a chance to look, is that the eighty-fifth percentile speeds, so not average, but eighty-fifth percentile speeds, it's on page two of the memo, are really right in there at about thirty mile per hour. Posted speed is twenty miles per hour, as I think all of you are aware. And what you'll find, if you looked back at the two thousand and eighteen study, which I have here in my hand, is the speeds really haven't changed. That's really just about the exact same eighty-fifth percentile speeds that we found back in two thousand and eighteen. The other thing you'll find in the study is that we did conduct an always-stop analysis, which you have to essentially meet certain warrants or criteria in order to install a stop sign. And what you'll find in the study is that of the warrants that we looked at, none of them were met. And essentially, in a nutshell, there just isn't enough traffic volume on Cozer or Highland to actually warrant or meet any of these criteria that are in our in our analysis. The other thing you'll find, and one of the warrants has to do with collisions. And as far as we can tell, using DOT data, there hasn't been a collision that's been reported at least for about the last ten years. So in our minds, it's operating pretty well. I know that the traffic speeds are a little faster than everyone would like to see. I did look at average speeds as well. We collect those as well when we put out our equipment. And while we don't use those for the setting of posted speeds or part of the always-stop analysis, just for your information, the highest average speed of any of these locations was twenty-six mile an hour. So again, I know it's a little faster than the community would like to see, but in our eyes, it's actually functioning pretty well. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the council or public might have and hope this was useful to you all for your conversation.
Are there any questions for Kent? Any comments, Warren? Did you want to comment?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. So thanks for doing the study. It looks like it's pretty thorough. And I read through it quickly before the meeting and it looks like, you know, it's indicated that it doesn't meet the criteria for a stop sign. I guess a couple of points that concern me is it sounds like, you know, the road's posted twenty and it doesn't sound like an average speed of twenty-five miles an hour is a concern. But the averages can be very misleading. If I understand the eighty-fifth percentile accurately, that's saying that, I think it listed twenty-eight, thirty-one miles an hour was where the eighty-fifth percentile fell. So is that saying that the fifteen percent above that are going in excess of thirty-one miles an hour? And the volume that I was reading had, you know, six hundred and ninety-nine cars entering or seven hundred and fifty-two. You know, the volume, the daily volume looked like it was over fourteen hundred cars. So is that saying that two hundred and ten cars or more are exceeding thirty-one miles an hour?
Yeah, so I haven't done the math, but you're correct in your assertion that eighty-fifth percentile speed essentially means that fifteen percent of cars are going over that speed. So if it's thirty mile per hour, then fifteen percent of that average daily traffic is exceeding that speed. That's correct.
So again, twenty-five miles an hour average doesn't sound bad, but when you start talking to actual cars, that over two hundred cars are going over thirty-one miles an hour a day. And I don't know if you track peak speeds. I'd be curious to know what the high speed was because you don't have to sit out in the yard very long to see cars going excessively fast down the street. And I realize it's not a concern for a lot of citizens. But right here with us, Mary Panther, Mike Gay, the houses right here, we're halfway in between the stop sign at George and the stop sign down on Melrose. So that's, we're right in that peak speed zone because people speed up from one stop sign, get up to peak speed, I bet right on the money right in front of us, and then start to slow down as they get down towards Melrose. So I understand it doesn't warrant a stop sign. And again, thank you for doing the study. But I guess so my question is, is so what's the solution? What do we do to fix this speed problem? Because I truly believe it's an issue and I think the neighbors do too.
Chief, do you want to address that?
We can, can continue to, excuse me, try to be a more visible presence. We've had the speed sign up there in an effort. We had it there posted for a long time in an effort to slow speeds. But as Warren stated on the, and I agree with his, I guess, supposition that probably speeds are reaching a peak right there at the intersection as they go by his house. It's not going to be a constant speed from George to Melrose. So from an enforcement standpoint, they're going to hit that peak and they're going to go back down. So unless we're able to get them right there, it doesn't diminish the problem that Warren is observing or the perception that it needs to be fixed. It's just traditional methods right now have succeeded or are successful in maintaining speeds of the eighty-fifth percentile. I mean, all I can do is go by the data that are what I would say acceptable and safe from a public safety standpoint. That doesn't alleviate Warren's concerns or his neighbor's concerns. Yet the data shows that that is a safe section of roadway. As Kent pointed out, for that particular intersection, there hasn't been a documented accident, a reportable accident that has occurred there. There hasn't been, that's not just car striking car, that's car striking pedestrian, that's car striking anything. I'm not somebody that believes we should just ignore an issue until their rear's its ugly head. But I think that we have, I think that that is a safe structure roadway.
So, hang on just a sec. Oh, so when the speed trailer was there, I think that did help. I think a police presence would be a huge help, especially between like seven in the morning and eight-thirty in the morning, between four and six in the afternoon. You know, it's like clockwork to see some of these people speeding. And I know you can only answer to the stuff that's been reported, but I know just from living here that, you know, six months ago, we watched a dog on a leash run out and a car, it didn't hit the dog, but the leash got caught, the car screeched to a halt and the leash got caught under the wheel. And, you know, it looked terrible, but it turned out the dog hadn't been hurt. So it's, again, I know there hasn't been accidents and that's good. And but, you know, you see things when you live here. And again, I'm really concerned that we're, we seem to be not okay with, but accepting that over two hundred cars a day are going at least thirty-one miles an hour or more up and down the street. That's a lot of cars. Oh, and the other thing was, so, you know, getting back to what potential solutions could be, so, okay, no stop signs. I know we'd brought up speed bumps before and I know there's some issues with those yet. I see them around Iowa City on various streets, so I don't know why a couple of speed bumps couldn't be put in place. That would certainly slow down cars. I think they'd only go over them once too fast. And the other thing would be the, instead of the speed trailer, be some signs that monitor the speed, you know, like you've got up on Melrose. I think that's very helpful if people come into University Heights to say, hey, it's, you know, right there, it's twenty-five. But in my opinion, those are, those are things that would definitely slow some traffic down.
Warren, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
So for, from an enforcement perspective, would your, as a neighborhood resident, preference be that visible, you know, here's a patrol car at Highland Avenue, or here's a patrol car in your driveway, or Mike's driveway, or whatever, visible in that peak area? That is a, that is a visible deterrent to speeding? Or, or as somebody who lives along that street, would you prefer that, you know what, I'd rather there not be that visible deterrent and instead I want you to try to catch a violator or a few, so be more sneaky about it? Or really some combination of both?
Yeah, I think visible is much better. I mean, it'd be great that, you know, pick it a few people, but the vast majority wouldn't realize that it happened and I think visible presence would have a huge impact.
Since the speed trailer isn't there currently, I will make sure that, and we have been posting on Cozer, but farther up at George, but I'll make sure that we're down there at Highland for some directed patrol.
Okay, that'd be great. Again, you know, I know you can't do that forever. It'd be great to, you know, still consider some long-term solutions that, you know, speed bumps or the traffic signs, so on. So that's my two cents. I think other neighbors are just as concerned. So, thanks.
I appreciate you being, I guess, determined enough to keep bringing it to my attention. So, thanks.
Sure, thank you.
All right, this is Doug. I'd like to mention also, I drive right by Warren's house every morning and every night. And when the speed trailer was there, I mean, it was like they were trying to set land speed records. I seen thirty-five mile an hour. I mean, that trailer after a while is just a toothless barking dog. I mean, it doesn't really do anything. It did, once in a while, when you first put it out, you can see a lot of brake lights come on. And then you can see a lot of people, they don't even, they don't even bother slowing down. They know it's just a scarecrow. And after a while, they're not scared anymore. But also up there on George Street going south toward the old folks on there, that's another stretch of road where they get a pretty good head of steam going up. And I've seen people roll through that stop sign there. It's almost an invisible stop sign there at the water fountain there. And I've seen a lot of folks down there that, you know, I'm on my motorcycle going twenty and they just like, they're gone. I mean, they're already up to Benton Street by the time I get halfway up to the park, you know. So I know they're cooking all of thirty mile an hour heading south.
Right. Kent can speak to this if there's a desire to, but that's the issue with some of the electronic signs, warning signs like that, is they do have it, they proved to be very effective for a short time period. But if I remember correctly, it's actually about after two weeks, if I remember correctly, that you start to see the diminished returns. Now, we as a community had other reasons or additional reasons for placing the electronic sign as you enter our community. And I think that it has had that desired effect too. I mean, it just takes away the argument that I wasn't aware or I didn't see the sign. But, but you're right. I'll see what I can do to address, it's easy enough to increase some directed patrol on those two streets, Doug.
Yeah, yeah, I think once in a while you're going to have to have a sacrifice and then that gets around real well. And, and again, it kind of goes back to unfortunately our reputation that everybody sees University Heights as a speed trample. And the people that come crying to me, I always tell them, I've never been pulled over for doing the speed limit yet. So that usually shuts them up pretty quick.
Yeah, it's a balance. It is a balance.
It is.
And, but we'll work on it. I know it's something important to the community, clearly.
Yes, it is.
The speed trailer too, I think, you know, it slows down the people that are mindful. And like you said, there's some that just see it as a challenge to see how fast they can go. But I do think when it was taken away, that at least our perception was that the speeds crept up again. So.
Thank you. Any other comments? I want to thank Kent for doing this so quickly. And their staff is tremendous in helping us whenever we ask them to. Thanks so much, Kent.
I had a question.
Very welcome. And we're here to help anytime University Heights needs it.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
I think Tim had a question, Mayor.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, Kent. I was just curious, is it normal that the, that the, the speed sign lights up when you're going the speed limit? It's kind of frustrating when you're going twenty and it lights up, yells at you when you're going twenty.
I agree. It's set for nineteen. It's not set for twenty. And I told the police that.
We fixed that when it was placed at the next location. That was a programming. That was a user error.
Okay. And I suppose photo enforcement's open on a big can of worms?
Actually, it is something that I looked into at a, at a recent training conference that I attended. And I don't know that now's the time to get into that, this particular meeting. But I think that has some, I think that it, it might check some boxes. I'm, before I propose it, actually, Doug, I'm curious to see what our disparity numbers come back or traffic contact data. Because frankly, photo enforcement is a way to still calm speeds and address, address community concerns of speeding. Yet at the same time, it is, it is very much a colorblind. All it is looking at is a vehicle and a speed. And, and there can be no question of if, if, if a strict logarithm is applied, that there's any built-in bias to it. So I'm just curious, if, if it becomes untenable or politically difficult to address some speed concerns without there being, you know, other issues put on the table, then I think that it's something that is worth exploring. And it might be worth exploring regardless. But I just wanted to get through this year and see how our data came out.
Okay, very good. That's interesting. I think photo enforcement, just awareness of that would definitely get people's attention.
Correct, correct. So I have, I've never been, I guess, proponent of it before, but I had a chance to talk to some vendors and look at some of the current systems that are out there and some of their capabilities. And I was intrigued at a minimum and interested at a, at another level. But I, as I said, I went to see how our data comes out this year, how we come out with, with neighborhood issues. And it's an option that's on the table as far as I'm concerned.
I'm sure there's probably some criteria there as well. Because if we put up one, then somebody else is going to want one and then somebody else is going to want one. And then I think you might be open to a big can of worms too, on the flip side of things. I mean, I'm trying to, trying to weigh, you know, it's cost and labor intensiveness, you know, chasing down license plate numbers and tracking down drivers and enforcing. And it sounds pretty labor intensive. You know, I don't know what kind of algorithm they have or what, but.
It is. This isn't the media to get into it, I don't believe.
Yeah, it's, it's a big can of worms. That's why I said that, so.
I think that is certainly something that is worth considering and I can, I can put an information packet together for a later circulation.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thanks again, Kent. Appreciate you attending. And Warren, please stay on to the meeting and see the rest of the meeting if you'd like.
All right.
Thank you. We'll go, Maggie Berger is here and we'll go move to finance. And we're going to talk about consideration of Resolution twenty-two twenty, setting the date of sale for the general obligation corporate purpose bonds. Maggie, you can hear us, right? Oh, there you are.
I can. Actually, I literally just walked in the door from my meeting. I was the other direction from you guys. I was to the western part of the state, so I, this was perfect timing. So thank you very much. So your resolution in front of you this evening is to approve the use of the official statement. This is a document that is what we call an issuer document. It has information regarding the city, regarding the debt that you're issuing. It's the two thousand and twenty-two A bonds, which are the tax-exempt bonds. It is the two thousand and twenty-two B bonds, which are the taxable, that is that small portion of debt that, that needs to be taxable based on timing. This document is what we will put out upon your approval tonight and some information that we're gathering from the city clerk. We will put this into the market and this is what the investors use as their document to place a bid. Those bids are scheduled to be received from ten to ten-thirty AM on June twenty-eighth and then ten-thirty to eleven for that taxable sale. Our office, Mark from our Chicago office, will then be having a Zoom with the mayor and a few key people on the finance team and the city clerk that like midday, about eleven fifteen, to, to explain and go through the bids that were received. And then Mark will be zooming into your seven PM meeting. And if I am cleared customs coming back from my trip, I will also be zooming into your meeting. If not, though, Mark is all prepared and has been introduced and is fully aware of what's going on and, and what he needs to do to present the final result. So are there any questions about that?
No questions.
Sounds good. Well, we'll, we'll continue to gather the information. And if you approve this resolution this evening, you can just let us know that if you don't take action now. And then again, we will get that out in the next day or two, once all that information is, is there. And that's, that's really the perfect timing. That's, that's the typical timing, is that about two weeks before the bond sale that information is distributed out to potential bidders.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you all for having me.
So consideration of Resolution number twenty-two twenty is before the council. Is there a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by Bobby. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stephanie. Discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Done.
Aye.
More? You're muted, Lisa.
You're on mute. Okay.
Thank you. Schroder?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Swales?
Hi.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. Okay, Maggie. We'll be meeting up at eleven fifteen, just the early, on Zoom, just early on that day to see what the numbers are and then we'll present it to the council at review that with them at seven PM that night.
That is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
That is correct. Thank you very much for having me.
You have all the information you need now, right? All the forms are done and?
I, I believe so. We're going to check that and we're going to check with IT why we weren't getting your emails earlier today. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Have a good one. Bye-bye.
Bye. Then what else do we have here under Bobby? I'm thinking we keep going. Oh, yes, we're going to talk about consideration of motion to approve workers' compensation policy renewal and municipal insurance package renewal with the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool for FY twenty-two twenty-three. Mike sent those numbers to you in his packet. So.
I, yeah, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, I think, right, Luis? Do I need to make a motion?
Yes.
Ma'am, make a motion to approve workers' compensation policy renewal.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Okay, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries five-zero. Then we might as well go and talk about the motion to increase compensation for city staff as provided by the FY twenty-two twenty-three budget. And this is an increase for the city treasurer and the city clerk. And he didn't put the previous numbers, but that would be the numbers that we list with their name in our minutes for the audits office. I need a motion to increase compensation for our two city staff.
I can make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, it was motion by Stephanie and second by Bobby. Okay, thank you. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move back just to clean this up a little bit, to go back to the engineer's report. And Josiah sent around his report and also sent around Resolution twenty-two thirteen for MetroNet. Do you want to talk about that a little bit, Josiah?
Sure, thank you. Short report this month. It was funny, the thing on Iman was that they were going to start underground work this week, so apparently they have.
How do you know?
Was that MetroNet and not Iman?
Iman, I guess that's who, who was out there today.
Yes.
Yeah. Did I say MetroNet?
Yes.
Yes, you did. So that concerned me a little.
Yeah. So Iman's out there, you know, we approved that last meeting and they did get all their permits and fees and bonds and everything submitted and their walkthrough. So they crossed all their Ts and dotted their Is on what they needed to do after that meeting. Before we hit the MetroNet, quick update, the pavement marking quote was awarded to Pendling at the last meeting. Talked to them today. It sounds like they're going to be doing that in July, after, sometime after July fourth weekend. And then I didn't have it on here, but I see the street sweeping. Payment is in the warrants. That was done as well. So if there's any questions about that, that was completed. So similar to the last meeting with Iman, so now MetroNet has a matching agreement and a resolution in front of the council. This goes back to what we've been talking about for the last year. This would be the second provider building out a fiber network in town. I don't have much to say beyond that. I guess it would be similar to Iman. If, if the agreement is approved and signed and routed around, they would need to get their permit fee and bonds and insurance and pre-start meeting all completed before they would start work. If there's any questions, happy to answer them.
When would they start this? In a couple of weeks or like Iman, you know, it was like within three weeks, almost exactly? Do you know?
Yeah, I think MetroNet would start quickly. There, there's, I guess, a good point would be that there's two types of work that they're both doing. One is overhead, which is the primary route for, for most of town. And then there's some underground. That's the same for Iman and MetroNet. So they need to get their permits from Mid-American Energy to do their overhead work. And a lot of that is not involved in the city right away piece of it, so they may start sooner on that, but I would expect the underground work would. Like you said, happen within a couple of weeks.
Hey, thank you. So consideration of resolution twenty-two thirteen is for the council authorizing permit for MetroNet Inc. Is, uh, there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Bobby. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Doug. Uh, discussion.
Are they gonna be placing the cable in the same location as, uh, the Iman stuff or how, what's the proximity to Iman's equipment?
Sorry, there, uh. They're, they're in the same vicinity. But sometimes not always on the same side of the street or at the same crossing location.
Oh my.
Uh, MetroNet has. Even fewer underground runs than Iman does.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Uh, roll call vote.
More.
Aye.
Um, Schroder.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Swales.
Hi.
Done.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Uh. We'll go down to legal report. Steve sent around a legal report. Um, several days ago. Are there any questions for Steve? Any comments you wanna make, Steve?
No.
No changes, okay. We'll move to, uh, city clerk report. Mike, you have, uh, liquor license renewal.
Right, uh, Stella ha- is up for their annual renewal. They have completed all their work. As I said in my report, they've completed all their work with the alcohol and beverages division. They've completed all their local work. Um, everything is in good order and good standing, so. I would, uh, recommend that you approve this renewal. Also, we may have, uh, Marriott coming back next month. They have changed their Durham Shop Insurance Provider. Which may necessitate, uh, an update in their liquor license. We're looking at that right now. So that could come to you in the July meeting.
If they need it sooner, we're meeting June twenty-eighth for a little bit.
That's a possibility too. I thought, I thought about that, so.
Okay. Okay, very good. So we're just gonna, we, all we have in front of us tonight is approval of liquor license renewal for Stella.
Right.
Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Stephanie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tim. Uh, discussion. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries unanimously five zero. Anything else, Mike?
I don't think so. Next month I'll be talking about, uh, rental permit. Renewal, which will, we'll put that out to landlords in July that you, our permits typically run August to August. So we'll have some updates with that. But otherwise, I think that's pretty much it.
Okay, any questions for Mike? Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll go to city treasurer's report. And, um, Lori and I have, right before the meeting. I just saw this, uh, invoice from Black Squirrel. Did you receive it, Lori? Did you see it?
I did. Well, I can't open it up, but I see the amount.
Well, it's fifteen hundred dollars from Black Squirrel. And, uh, it's for two ash trees that were removed from forty, in the city right away at forty-four Highland. Drive. And he contact, the owner contacted me last month. And, you know, we need to remove ash trees, so what the city has done in the past is set up a fifty percent. Recovery. The city would cover fifty percent and the owner would cover fifty percent in the city right away for tree removal. And so how this works is. Uh, Black Squirrel made the bid. I thought fifteen hundred for two big ash trees was a. Really good buy and removing the stumps so that new trees could put in there. And then the owner will pay the city. Uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars back. And so that's. What was done there. And so I think that's the only add-on bill, right?
Oh my god.
Yeah, because I wanted it in this, uh. The budget ends, of course, June thirtieth, and we had some money in the tree removal budget for that. So, okay, so adding that, are, are there any other additions or corrections or? To the warrants? Is there anyone who has an objection to paying the warrants? Hearing none, the warrants will be paid. By unanimous consent. Okay. Lori, did you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay, very good. Um, then we'll go on to the chief report and chief, I'm so glad you could send out your report. Means that you had to, um. Be with family at this time, and so, um, did you wanna speak a little bit about?
It's, the report itself is pretty self-explanatory. I'll answer any questions anybody has. Uh, really the only comment that's not in the report is. I've said this many times before, but I don't think I can say it too much. I appreciate the support of, of the council. Both personally, but also for the police department and, and the work of my officers. That can allow me to be where I think I need to be when there's a, a crisis, so thank you.
Thank you. So what we have is, um, we have the list of the hourly wages that we need to approve tonight. Because their, um. Pay raise starts July one. With the new year and, uh, so it's listed here. It's a five point nine percent increase and. Troy had sent that report last month, uh. Did you wanna add anything, Stephanie or Bobby? I, I think it just is self-explanatory maybe. And so we need to get, um, motion to increase the UHPD. Uh, payroll. Hourly payroll effective July first, twenty twenty-two. And then this will be recorded in the minutes with their names as we need to do for the audit every year. And so is there a motion to approve this?
I'd like to motion, Louise.
Okay, good. Motion by Stephanie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Thank you. Uh, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Five zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. And, um. Uh, you talked a little bit about the, um. Air conditioning problem in your report, chief, and, um. And that the mayor would follow up and so we, we had this discussion in text messages for the past week and I got a s-. We got a second, um. Um, estimate. The first estimate to repair the air conditioning, there's two air conditioning units, ones for the community center and ones for the offices. And, uh, the police have been without air conditioning. And the, um, sadly, the, uh, warranty ran out January twenty-twenty-two. And so. Uh, we got two bids. The first bid was twelve thousand five hundred. And the second bid is eight thousand. And so I went ahead, I knew the weather was coming. And I went ahead last Thursday and told him to order the air conditioning unit. He, he called me today and said it's in. They're gonna start tomorrow. And put it in and the crane will put it up there at one o'clock in the afternoon. That should be fun for the kids to watch. And then, and then, um, by tomorrow night, we should have. Air conditioning restored at the city office.
Wow, thank you.
Yeah, I told, uh, Bill from Kelly Heating and Air Conditioning, you're making me look really good, Bill. Thank you very much. Um, so. The officers are very pleased with that too. So I wanted to give that update and that's an unexpected expense that we have. But we'll discuss more about covering that expense later. And then we have building zoning and sanitation and I know. There's been some issues that Tim's been helping with, but everything's going well, right? I don't think there's anything in front of council now. So we'll go on to e-government and Lisa, you. Uh, included a report. Did you wanna comment or any questions for Lisa?
I'll just say the thank yous to everyone. Jeff Spikeinsky, Mike Heverkamp. Patricia Gagie, Officer Chris Akers for helping out with the bike breakfast. Um, and of course Mayor Frome. Makes everything work, like the bike breakfast and the farmer's market.
And Steph joined us to help later, right? Did you mention that? Okay, very good. Yeah, it was kind of a rainy day. It was a little disappointing. That it was raining, but you know, those bicyclists, they go in rain. Uh, so, you know, it wasn't a big turnout as. Always, but it was a, still a turnout, so that's good. Thanks, Lisa. And, um. We'll go to, um. Let's see, mayor's report. And my one thing was to tell about the expense with the city office. Oh yeah, I wanna remind people, please come to the farmer's market. It was pretty hot today, but vendors showed up and. And, uh, they seemed to like that space. I kinda wish we had a little bit of shade, but they're bringing more tents. And I think we're getting more walkthrough from the hospital and. Even maybe from the hotel. So. Please come down and see it and. Mike Heverkamp, I'm trying to get cover for him and his band so they can start playing a little bit of music here in the coming weeks. Right, Mike? That's great.
I'm, yes, right. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, uh, now we'll have some discussion of in-person Zoom council meetings. Uh, one of the council members asked that we talk about this a little bit and, uh. And I wanted to get feelings of what council would like to do moving forward.
Personally, I'm fine with anything we decide to do. I mean, I. I like the convenience of the online. However, I also get that. In-person meetings are more, I don't know, they seem, maybe they're more convenient for public. I don't know, but I'm, I'm great with either.
I would. Prefer for now at least to stay with the Zoom meeting. And, uh. I think the Zoom meeting provides more access for the public, oddly enough. I mean, instead of having to come to the community center. You can. Zoom on your computer. You can call in through Zoom on the phone or you can come to the community center. And zoom there, so. I think that's the spirit of the law, if not the letter of the law. But for me, I thought the meeting last week was, I mean, last month was a great example. Bless Doug's heart, but.
Yeah, I, I was.
Yeah.
I was kinda fifty-fifty on it, but then after that, I'm kinda like sixty-forty now, so. Sixty percent, uh, doing Zoom and forty percent of personnel, so. And again, it, you, every day, you, you just don't know what's going on. I mean, our numbers are seemingly going down, but. You know, how, how often do we wanna revisit this? If the numbers spike up in a month or two, do we jump back to Zoom? And I mean. I, I don't know how consistent you wanna make this. Uh, I, I'm good with either or. I mean. I, I, I really am good with either or, but, uh, like I say, it's pretty fresh in my mind where I was and. And I didn't even know I was sick till I tested positive, so. I don't know if anybody wants to see me. I'm not that good-looking, but I don't think you wanna catch any germs I had either.
Are we, um. I mean, maybe this is a question for. Well, are we getting any requests to go back to in-person?
Not from the public. I haven't heard anything from the public. I actually think it's more accessible to be on Zoom with the public. Um, because, uh. They can come into the office and my cooks them up or they can, uh, use their computer at home. And that's, but I've, I've never had anybody complain or. You know, I don't Zoom. Oh, well, just come to the office like you normally would. You know, and they go, okay. You know, so I think it works well. I. I wear a mask when I go out in public. I've seen some people. On council and they can witness that I'm wearing a mask and I didn't know they were gonna be there, but, uh. I don't, I really don't wanna be in that space yet. Uh, I, just this last week, I know several people who have COVID. And my sister and brother-in-law. He went to Decora to be with his ninety-year-old parents and then two sisters came in and they all got COVID. And that was just this week. And I think there has been more spikes and. I. I would like to stay on, but it's a council decision. And, um. I don't feel comfortable wearing, if I am up there, I don't think I can wear a mask. And at the meeting. I mean, I don't think that's fair to. To listen to people that way. I don't know, you know, I have a hard enough time telling fairway what kind of meat I want. They gave me the wrong meat. But, you know, and I try to speak really loud through my mask. And, uh, so anyway, that's, that's my personal opinion. But.
I kinda agree with you there. I, I feel like if you have to wear a mask, period, then maybe we ought to just stay on Zoom. You know? Until we get a few more months under our belt and then we can relax the mask mandate or at least the mask requirement. You know, comfortability level, whatever you wanna call it, that. Maybe that'll fall to the wayside, but, uh, I just feel like you gotta wear a mask. You know, it's probably a good idea. Why add one more risk factor? To it, you know?
I, I kinda feel like I'm fine going back to in-person, but I don't feel strongly enough about it that. I'm gonna, I feel like I need to like, you know, put my foot down or something. I don't. It doesn't, it's really not a, a hill to die on for me, I guess, right now. So I guess I kinda just, you know. I don't know, like whatever, whoever said it, the, the spirit of the, the thing is, you know, you don't prevent people from, from coming and I think. If that's the case, then. If we're not preventing for people or unable to meet and there's no limitations and. I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine either way. I'm, I'm really, yeah, I think it's okay to.
I think it's good to have the discussion about it periodically and see where people stand. So I just wanna be respectful to the council and if someone wants to bring up a subject, I. Put it on the agenda. So we can all, and I think that was a good idea, so.
No strong opinion here either. Maybe when you feel. That, you know, it is clear from COVID to go back to it. Maybe it could be every quarter or something, every three months. Do it live or something to mix it up. Or something like that.
At least the winter time, I don't wanna get out when it's cold.
Yeah.
What about today, Doug?
It's warm. I could've met in person today. I don't know why we didn't.
Well, I don't hear real strong feelings for going back. It's, it seems like, um. I will continue and. On Zoom, if. If that's okay.
I, I appreciate that. I mean, I'm. I am not ready to go into that little space again. And I agree with the mayor. I don't want to wear a mask in a meeting.
Uh, maybe staff wants to comment, but maybe they don't.
I don't know.
No, I was, I'm probably the only one that actually wants to come back in person, but. Um, I don't have anything based that off of either, so I'm new on council. I've never done the in-person. Thing either. So maybe I don't know what I'm pushing for.
Well, you've served on zoning commission and, uh, board of adjustments, so you have some. Well, you've served on zoning commission and Board of Adjustment, so you have some experience of in-person.
Yeah, I I look forward to seeing you guys in person and the interaction that comes with that. But I also understand the health and safety aspect of it. And I guess I don't feel kind of like Bobby said, I don't feel so strongly that I need to put my foot down to get my way if other people are strongly in the other direction. So I'm fine with staying on Zoom.
Anyone else want to comment? Okay. Let's see. If we, if council's okay, we'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements?
Just to officially announce that we will be, council will have a special meeting, seven PM, June twenty-eighth to accept, now say, make sure I say this correctly, to accept bond bids. That would be my only announcement.
Thank you, Mike, for saying that one more time. And that should be a very short meeting, I think. Fifteen minutes or less possibly. You know, you never say that because then it's like bad luck. Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone.